Academic school year where students will be in session tomorrow. As we do our work for the great city schools, I am tonight giving my time for this important conversation and dialogue as we move forward. So I will turn it over now to Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Thank you, Board Member Shuda. Hello, everyone. This is the Executive Affairs Committee meeting, the first of the academic year, as Ms. Board Member Shuda indicated. Today, we're going to continue the conversation on student outcomes, student focus outcomes, that we engage in a contractual relationship with some consultants. And I see our consultant here, Coach, actually, Leslie Grant, you'll hear from her. So last year, the board decided to go into contact with the Council of Great City Schools to focus in on student outcome focus governance. And that was after our first retreat. And the mantra is student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. So we did a pilot, and I'm sure Dr. Williams Knight will touch on that, with three goals. And that was to focus in on third grade disadvantaged students, and grade three, and then ELA and math. And the third goal was 12th graders in their increased graduation. So we did a listening tour, a series, I think it was over 100, that we did across the city. All of our board members participated in that. We got some interesting conversations and buy-in from the community. And as a result, we did a second retreat after the Council of Great City Schools analyzed all the data, put it together, prioritized what the community thought was important. And then we did our second retreat, and the board then brainstormed for a day, which results in prioritizing some goals for the ensuing year. So with that, we're at this juncture where we're going to continue the conversation, do the good work that's expected for our children in the Buffalo Public Schools. And I'm going to now pass this on to Dr. Williams Knight to continue. And then you can introduce Leslie.
Okeydoke. Greetings, everyone. We are about to start a new school year tomorrow. It seems like we just ended the school year, and we're already about to start a new one. And, you know, about an hour ago, my phone started dinging, and I just want to send out heartfelt thoughts and sympathies for the learning community in Georgia. They have experienced something that is the worst of the worst, a shooting outside of a high school. And I guess information is still becoming available, but that is the worst. That is the worst. And I just, you know, want to send out thoughts and prayers for that learning community from the Buffalo Public Schools, because you can do everything right, and, you know, something like that happens. So I hate to start like that, but that is what was on my mind and my heart, you know, at this particular moment. So I'll go ahead now and get started with, you know, what we've been engaged in this summer, you know, my team and myself, and I know that the board has been very engaged in it, is taking a look at how we ended our year as far as the outcomes for students and where we're going for the next several years. I know that Leslie, you know, last year, we all agreed that, you know, it was a trial year, you know, we were learning as we were going along, and we had some gains, and we had some areas where, you know, we didn't experience what we had hoped we would with the high school graduation rate. Nevertheless, you know, we know now that setting a goal for just one year can be a challenge. And so we've been involved in looking at multi-year goals. Where do we want to get, you know, in five or six years? And then we build on getting there. And so, you know, I apologize that when the board met at the retreat, I had COVID, I was out. I tried to hang with it, couldn't really hang with it the whole day. But I heard it was a very eventful retreat meeting, and there were some very spirited conversations. At the end of it all, I believe that the board did come to some consensus around where they would like to see, you know, my work and the work of the district moved towards. I got a copy of it, and it focused on 2025 to 2030, which would be five years for us to meet some goals. That being said, we right now are in September of 2024. And we just held our State of the Schools address last week, and I think there was great synergy. I think that our schools are, not I think, I know, that our schools are raring to go, because they've been calling to find out, okay, tell us where we're going for this year. What do we need to be focused on for this year? There's excitement. And, you know, I've been around this district long enough to oftentimes see when things are starting to work, sometimes we throw the baby out with the bathwater, and we start a new initiative. I'm suggesting tonight that the board consider, just for this year at least, building on what we started last year. We put great systems in place, and we saw some really good outcomes. That I'm going to be honest with you, I wasn't for sure when we set that, you know, the outcomes that we set, the goals, the 6% growth in DIBELS, that we would really be able to see it, because we knew that we chose a group of children that had experienced the most harm during the pandemic. And to be honest, they weren't scoring like that even before the pandemic. But we did. We did it. And so I don't want to just throw that out and start all over with something else. We've got a group of students that are moving. We've got a group of teachers that are trained. We've got a group of principals that are all on board. We've got parents that are beginning to use the language of DIBELS and how to move their children. And I would strongly recommend that for this year at least, I know that the board during the retreat came up with some things for 25 through 30. I think that's great, and we're going to talk about it. But I think for this year, to continue building on what we started with those third graders, following them into fourth grade, and making sure that their growth continues, and expanding it back to the new group of third graders, because we've got systems now for third graders. Those teachers have been trained. Those principals understand what we need to see. And so that's kind of what I wanted to talk about a little bit today. And Dr. Evans-Brown, who is, you know, the first Vice President for Executive Affairs, has really been linked in all along, you know, she has helped to lead the process. We had a long conversation. And she agrees that we have to build on the successes that we've seen. So I just hope that, you know, what the board hears tonight, I know that it will be a spirited conversation, I expect that. But I'm hoping for this year that you will consider us building on the gains that these babies have already seen this year, and then expanding it to a whole new group of third graders that are coming in tomorrow. Next slide, Admire. So I don't want us to forget, again, about the hard work that this board has influenced and helped to lead all along. And it started, you know, years ago, under my predecessor with an education bargain. And then we polished it, we went through it, and we enhanced what was already there. And it's a new education bargain. And there are eight tenants that we talk about in the new education bargain, this bargain between this school district and, you know, our community and our parents. We cannot do it all. We try, but we can't do it all. It has to be a bargain, and everybody has a really important space in that. And so when we look at setting new goals, and when we looked at the goals last year, this was a part of it. I just, I'm really concerned about leaving things that are working and just starting all over, you know. And so the new education bargain helps. I'm sorry. Did someone say something?
No, I said, Jesus, give me strength. That's what I said.
Oh, okay, okay.
I didn't know my mic was hot, but I need strength right now.
Okay, well, sending strength, yeah. So there are three areas, really, when we looked at our goals, it touched on all eight tenants, but we prioritized. And when we looked at the tenants, rigorous early elementary education is something that, you know, the goals from last year focused on, we were real, real focused on that third grade group, even though our kindergarteners came out, I mean, amazing, the gains that they made, the first graders, the second graders. So we know that the children that are coming up through the ranks are going to be even stronger than the third graders were last year. We're putting a lot of focus on early childhood education, so that when they get to ninth grade, because as, you know, we all know, and I know Board Member Shuda, a former high school principal knows, it's really difficult to move students who come into grade nine, not being able to read, not being able to do math, even at a foundational level. But we know if we get it right on the early end, you know, then we won't have to address some of the things that our high school principals are having to address right now. So we want to continue with putting some focus on our early elementary education programs. And then, you know, while we're working on that, we can't, again, throw away the baby with the bathwater. We do have high school students that are in the pipeline. We have ninth graders that will be showing up in all of our 16 high schools tomorrow, some of which have scored at a Level 1, some of which have scored at a Level 4. Either way, it's up to us, wherever they are, to meet them and to do everything that we can to make sure that they are receiving all that they need, so that they're able to graduate in four years. It's going to be more difficult, but that's the task that we've been assigned. So we'll be doing that, you know, we will be doing that, and we'll talk about some of the ways that we're going to do that. But for our next set of goals for this year, rather than looking at seniors, who really, when they start ninth grade, that's when things begin ticking, in ninth grade. It doesn't start in senior year, it starts in ninth grade, in ninth grade. So we want to start working with our ninth graders who are incoming into high school this year, because in order to move up to a 10th grade homeroom, you have to have earned five and a half credits. Otherwise, what happens is, you continue to get older, but you stay in a ninth grade homeroom. And so you could be 18 years old with two credits, Jim and Art, and you're still sitting in a ninth grade homeroom with children who have just turned 14 years old, who are starting high school. That's not productive. So we want to do everything we can with these ninth graders that are coming in excited, energized, to make sure that we get as many earning five and a half credits this year as we can. So we'll be working on the high school component and on the early childhood component. And then, you know, just continuing to look at our extended learning time program, we've been looking at that all year. And it's been a challenge, if we're honest with ourselves, since COVID. You know, we had bus driver issues with a bus driver shortage. We went to a three-tiered bell schedule, which fixed some things, created some concerns for other things, like extended day. And so if you happen to be at a late school that ends at 4:15, what that means, if we had a three-hour extended day program, is that on a Friday afternoon, somebody would need to be supervising and in that building until 7:15 with the children. And if I'm honest, the agencies had a difficult time staffing, and we did too. So we had to look at things and, you know, see how we could get the most bang for our buck and get the most meaningful support for our children as possible. So that's, that's what we'll be looking at as we're setting our goals for this year, and it is entrenched in the new education bargain. Admire, next slide. So in addition to aligning our new goals for this year, or the recommended ones for the board to consider for this year, again, we can't give up all of the work that we've done. We spent a lot of time on this 5 by 2025 framework. And so much so that even as people come in and we're interviewing them, they know about it. They're on our websites, they've heard about it, the community knows, our schools know. It is a framework to help frame the goals that the board will set. So, you know, again, I'm very, you know, our entire community is entrenched in it, and, you know, I just don't want us to give up one thing for something else, especially not when we're seeing outcomes for children. And so when we look at our 5 by 2025 framework, you know, the things that we're suggesting could support our goals would be what we said we do, which is what the community wants to see, us eliminating opportunity and achievement gaps by making sure that we're having excellent and equitable outcomes for all of our children. That's what the community said they wanted to see. And it's in our framework, making sure that our children are reading on grade level by the end of third grade. It is in our framework, and amplifying all voices. This board went out and did a community listening tour. You heard from the community. I did a listening tour a year and a half prior to that. I heard from the community. And I would bet if we sat down and compared the data from what we both heard, it would be very similar. And somewhere in the data that, you know, of what we both heard, between the new education bargain and between the 5 by 2025, I would bet that there are more similarities than differences. The bottom line is that our community wants our children getting better outcomes. That's what they want. They want our children safe, they want our children well, and they want better academic outcomes for our children. So I will turn things over for this next slide, because we're getting into the meat of, you know, how are we going to do this? What did we do last year? What are we planning to do this year? And then Ebony and Laurel will take over from there and talk about what we're suggesting for this year. And then we'll go over what the board wanted for 2025 through 2030. Chief Botticelli?
Good evening. I'm just going to talk a little bit about some of the implementation supports that we have in place. I believe we have been very intentional. We have a solid understanding of what needs to happen to achieve the goals that the board is setting and that the superintendent is recommending. So I'm just going to talk briefly about some of those supports. So we want to build and expand on last year's successes. We're going to make sure that we're delivering solid core foundational skills. So what does that look like? One of the things that we know is really important to make sure kids are reading on grade level, is that they have a solid foundation in the basic skills, like phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, even vocabulary. So we have been very intentional. We've opened up the OG, the Orton-Gillingham and the morphology training to our third and fourth grade teachers. Initially, it was our K to 2, our special education, our ENL teachers, our coaches and reading teachers. But we know that when we're targeting third and fourth, it's really important to have enough people trained to support the students. So Orton-Gillingham and morphology focus on those foundational skills. Teachers can use them during differentiated time, ENL teachers, special education teachers, GenEd teachers. We can also use it during RTI, which is our response to intervention. So kids can get targeted doses of the solid foundational explicit instruction that they need to be successful. We're also ensuring that we have uninterrupted literacy blocks. So again, K to 3, we have a 90-minute period. 30 minutes of that is typically reserved to differentiate, so it leads to teachers using this new training. And then we also obviously have our RTI periods, which are 30 minutes for math and another 30 minutes for reading. We have a 60-minute math block. So again, we're trying to be very intentional, making sure that kids have the dedicated uninterrupted time that they need to be successful. This year, we're also implementing a new math program. It's called REVEAL, and we're implementing it grades K through 8. It also provides very targeted intervention. So there's a new platform that we have available to teachers. It's called Alex. Alex is not actually part of REVEAL, but it works together with REVEAL. So while teachers are providing solid instruction in the foundational skills for the mathematics program, students will take diagnostics within the Alex platform. And then that will also provide information to students and teachers about what students need to do to bolster their skills. So it provides activities for the kids. It's very similar to what we might have used in the past with MobiMaxx, which, by the way, we will maintain. So teachers will have many tools available to them to support mathematics instruction. And again, the state has provided us with First in Math, which will go up to grade 8 this year. I think you've heard me talk about how successful that implementation has been. So there's a lot of tools that the teachers will have to support students in the math program. We're also providing training. We offered training over the summer. We're doing some training in September, and we'll continue to provide training on the math, on how to implement the math program successfully, using the data to drive student instruction, excuse me, teacher instruction. We also have to make sure that we monitor our implementation. So again, we have very strategic classroom visits. Principals use the instructional coaching tool to go in and monitor their own teachers. Teachers have access to the coaching tool itself, so they know what the principal is looking for, because they know our priorities. We have scheduled visits from central office staff, which includes ASLs, CAI, I go out as well. So we're making sure that we're in those classrooms, A, checking that the training we've provided is being used, B, making sure the programs are being implemented with fidelity, to make sure that they're being used correctly, and then offering any supports that staff might need. Grade level meetings are built into schedules at the elementary level, common planning at the secondary, so we have opportunities to work with teachers. I was actually talking to our Director of Math just a little while ago, and she was saying that schools have already reached out to schedule her staff in to come to the grade level meetings at the elementary and talk about the new program and provide supports. And again, we always want our data to be visible. We want to make sure everybody's aware of how their students are performing. So Alex will be a tool for us, MobiMaxx continues to be a tool for us, Amplify, which is our M-class DIBELS system, all those tools also go to the dashboard, so we will know specifically how our students are performing. And then we can not only monitor, but support the teachers to make sure kids are successful. We have a lot of other things going on, and I'm happy to talk about that at any point in time. But we're trying to be as strategic as possible to support the work that needs to take place. 3 to 8, we also, we implemented a new reading program last year, so that is in our 3 to 5 classrooms, and we use the modules, grade 6 to 8. So again, we've been very intentional about the supports that we provide to those teachers and the materials we provide to the students. Thank you.
So I know that was a lot. That was a lot. And one of the things that we've been working with Leslie on is creating a mechanism for the board where we're reporting every month. It'll be hopefully condensed to a one-page document, you know, I like, I believe it's called a Gantt chart, you know, where you can kind of see where we're in the red in some areas, where we are in the yellow and where we are in the green. But, you know, I felt it was necessary for you to see some of the, and hear about, some of the systems that have already been put in place with these third grade, the third grade teachers that we have, with the intentional attention to how we schedule classes, to make sure that we have expanded time for the students in certain areas. And again, we just don't want to throw all of that away when we saw such, such great gains for our students. I'll turn things over to Lauren Ebony to finish us out and go over what it is specifically for this year, and talk about the goals that the board worked on with our consultants for 2025 through 2030. Lauren Ebony?
So, good evening. Admire, next slide. Thank you, Dr. Williams Knight, and Chief Academic Officer Botticelli, and esteemed honorable board members. So you sort of got a taste of the, again, the systems, the structures, the frameworks by which our work is, it was foundational to our work. And so all of that is important, because after a host of work and looking at data, I think the public would be really interested to know that Laura and her team produced a 230-plus-page book of data for you all. And so after you guys chewing that up and meeting and being in retreat, you guys agreed on a set of draft guardrails. And again, the guardrails were based on those really quality points, touch points coming out of your conversations with our community. And so the first guardrail by which we're building, again, this foundation of those systems on, is equitable allocation. The superintendent will not allow buildings to be without necessary resources. And again, Anne talked about those intentional resources and intentional supports, based on academic and social emotional need to attain student achievement targets, utilizing modifications to the budget system. Also, because we wanted to make sure that we had a healthy culture and climate by which to support equitable allocation decision makings, the second guardrail that the board agreed upon, and this language may get massaged a little, but right now we have that the superintendent shall not allow standards of conduct, character, and support to be unenforced, including suspension, safety, climate, and expectation. So this was the language, the draft language coming out of the retreat that the board had, after looking at our systems and structures, really chewing up crunching numbers and data, looking at how our students have done, these were the draft guardrails. Next slide. And so also coming out of that work, the board, you all came up with draft goals, and you came up with three. The first goal centers around college and career readiness, and what we want to make sure we gain in terms of producing quality high school graduates. So the draft language is the percentage of VPS students who graduate within four years demonstrating proficiency by earning at least one college credit, receiving, or, excuse me, at least one college credit, receiving a technical endorsement or CDOS endorsed diploma will increase from one number in August 2025 to a different number in August 2030. Your second goal was around literacy. And so the draft language is the percentage of economically disadvantaged grade 3 through 8 students who are proficient in ELA on New York State assessments will increase from one number, one percentage, in 2025 to a different percentage in 2030. And lastly, the draft language around numeracy, goal number three, was that the percentage of economically disadvantaged grade 3 through 8 students who are proficient in math on New York State assessments will increase from one percentage point in 2025 to another percentage point in 2030. We're still doing the work in providing you with longitudinal data. We still have some conversation to have around these goals. I do know that Laura and our team will continue to give you data so that you can, so we can really make wise choices. This year is going to be our benchmark year. Laura's going to talk to you about some goals that we're proposing for this year, to set us up to make sure that the, that we rise proficiency and the graduation, the college credit and receiving technical endorsements. So I'm going to go to a timeline slide.
One second, Dr. Bullock. I just want to stay here for a minute, and I want us to sit here for a minute, because, you know, this is high stakes, very serious work. Because, you know, this is high stakes, very serious work. It's hard work. I think, you know, it, it deserves to have some time because not only are we talking about a superintendent's tenure, these are goals that when you give me goals, I get serious. I get real, real serious about it. And I focus our entire district on whatever it is you say we're focused on. And, you know, I focus our community, our parents. It's very serious, but more than that, it's about the children. It's about the children. We're saying that, you know, we expect increases by a certain time. And we're measuring and we're doing the work. But I feel like from last year, we set some goals quickly. We set some goals quickly. And I just want us to really, you know, as Chief Bullock shared, it's a 200-plus-page document full of data that informs us. And we got to spend some time, not only looking at the data from this past year, but looking at the trend data. And in meeting with Leslie and AJ, one of the things that they shared that for me was mind-blowing is that sometimes depending on the population you choose and the life experiences that they're going through, you may have to take a step back before you can go forward. It's about being realistic, you know, really not trying to hide the data, saying what it is. And if our children, we know are coming out of a pandemic, and if we know we're choosing a group of children that, you know, is having, is showing a pattern of not moving in leaps and bounds for us to just say, well, you know, we think we can grow by 10% this year without anything to substantiate, that is unfair to everybody. And so sometimes what they shared is that we may have to take a step back. We may say we're going to see a decrease before we see an increase. You know, we got to look at, we got a budget situation that we're dealing with. So not only are we dealing with external factors there, but we're dealing with that too. We still have a bus driver shortage that we're dealing with. So that's the reason why we didn't haphazardly, we know that the board did a lot of work that day coming up with these goals. You agreed on them. We respect it. And we want to be respectful as we look at, you know, what numbers are stretch but realistic because that's what we want. We want a stretch goal, but we want to be in the ballpark. So I'll let Chief Bullock take over from here.
Also additionally, Dr. Williams Knight and honorable board members, I want to also take a note before, and thank you, Dr. Williams Knight, for slowing me down a little bit. I want us also to know that our literacy and our numeracy goals will set us up for our college and career readiness goals. Our plan with this slow, methodical look at trend data to see how our students, not students in another district, but how our students, how they're faring year to year and putting in, again, those intentional systems, structures, help for students, and even in some cases acceleration if they need it, will allow us to make sure that our eighth graders are going to high school with the right amount of credits and knowledge and on track so that we really can have a steady, healthy graduation rate. And so you will see through your great work and our continued work this fall, there's a through line between go two, go three, and go one. Go two and three, literacy and numeracy at the third, at third through eighth grade level is going to help us ensure that ninth graders can finish their ninth grade year with five and a half credits. That sophomore year, junior year, our high schoolers are earning those endorsements, earning college credit in their advanced courses. Admire? And then so, since we are one team, one family, so we're all clear. So here's our timeline, our timeline for creating achievable, smart goals for 25 through 2030. So we're going to set a year-long calendar of goal updates. And we'll be updating the board and our public in our work sessions. It is our goal, our high goal, to have that year-long calendar of updates ready by October. We have to have a couple more conversations with our esteemed board members, some conversations among the cabinet, retooling some things. But by October, we will have a year-long calendar of how we will update you and what we will update you on. Every month, the board will get an update, but it may not be the same data points every month. But we want you all to know what we will be updating you on. Then by December of 2024, we will have created a set of standardized reporting forms for the board. So not just you'll have a calendar, but we're going to create a standardized reporting form for you. As Dr. Williams Knight said, we're, we're working to have it fit in a one-pager, so it's, it's quick and it's easy and straight to the point. But that takes some time to massage where the data sits in our district and how it can fit in a nice and easy digestible format on one page. And then finally, by March of 2025, we will finalize with the board a multi-year plan for goals that will begin in August of 2025 and go through August of 2030. So year-long plan, creation of a standardized reporting, and then finalizing this multi-year plan by March of 2025. I want to talk just a little bit before Laura talks to you about what we propose as our goals for this school year around some goal-setting processes and practices. Admire, can you go to the next slide? So again, the way in which we began to set these goals, it started, as you know, in the spring of 2024, when the board engaged in a community listening tour. And it started in the winter in 2023, and it went throughout the spring of 2024. And the board engaged diverse stakeholders, students, parents, teacher leaders, community leaders, all so they could gather the most pertinent data and the voice of the community so that our goals can be not only informed by data, but by the voice of the people that we serve. That data was then collected and analyzed by consultants from the Council of Great City Schools. A data report was provided to the board and district in the summer of 2024. That's that big, Laura and I refer to it as the data Bible, the 2425 data Bible, that 230-page autopsy of how our students have been performing over the last three to five years across various metrics that was provided to the board in the summer of 2024. The district supplied the board and the Council of Great City Schools with a comprehensive, high-leverage data report. So we broke it down even a little bit more, and we made sure that the board and the Council of Great City Schools was able to focus on certain slices of the data in order that we really began to zero in on what we believe would be the best goals to set us up for success again, from August 2025 to August of 2030. And finally, the board engaged in a full-day retreat and agreed to a set of goal and guardrail narratives, again, for the period of August 2025 to August of 2030. And so while that is on the horizon, while we are doing all of that great work, going back to the, you know, the grindstone, looking at data, looking at trend data, running all kinds of correlations and trying to really make sure that if we focus on this, that it will give us the bang for the buck, we still really felt like it was really important to focus on the third graders that we worked so hard for and with last year, and they are now our fourth graders. So Dr. Williams Knight is proposing a set of goals for that group of students, but then also for the current third graders. Because again, we know that we have put so much resources and time behind the current fourth graders and their teachers who still are, they're back still in third grade. And so we have a third grade cohort right behind that we want to steward over and, and give them the best of what we learned from last year. And so we will be doing that while we drive home this last process that I talked about with respect to goals for August of 2025 through August of 2030. So I'm going to pass the torch on to Laura. And again, Laura's going to talk about our proposal, Dr. Williams Knight's proposal for goals for this school year. Laura?
Thank you, Dr. Bullock and Dr. Williams Knight and honorable board members. Admire, next slide. So the first goal that we are proposing for the 2425 school year is a literacy goal. It is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade four students who are proficient on the 2025 end-of-year DIBELS assessment will increase from 35% in June of 2024 to 38% in June of 2025. So these are last year's third graders. We want to follow that same group and continue the growth that we saw this year. And we have three proposed interim goals for that goal. The first one, interim goal 1.1, is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade four students who are proficient on the I-Ready ELA assessment will increase from 16% in June of 2024 to 18% in June of 2025. Interim goal 1.2 is that the percent of economically disadvantaged grade four students who are well below average, which is in the red when it comes to the DIBELS assessment, will decrease from 47% in June of 2024 to 45% in June of 2025. So we think it's important that all students are showing growth, even if they don't quite meet the proficiency mark. It's still very important to go from well below average to at least a step up, even if they don't quite reach proficiency. So we want to measure those students. And then the third goal, interim goal 1.3, is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade four students who pass their ELA course will increase from 95% in June of 2024 to 96% in June of 2025. Next slide, Admire?
Before you move, Laura, Laura, I'd like to just say, I know that there are some board members that may be wondering. We said that our third graders ended at 40% on the end of the year DIBELS. Can you explain to them why it looks like it's a decrease, but it's a different population and test?
Sure. Can you go back one slide, Admire? I'm sorry. So, yeah, so typically, although this group of students were, 40% of them were proficient at the end of third grade, on the fourth grade test, we tipped, we only ended up with 35% proficient because we're, we're assessing them on a different set of skills. The third grade skills are different from the fourth grade skills. So we would still be increasing our proficiency overall when it came to the fourth grade skills, even though the numbers aren't lower than where we ended up last year because it's a totally different set of skills that we're testing. Now we can go to the next slide. So goal two is also a literacy goal. It is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade three students who are proficient on the end-of-year DIBELS assessment will increase from 40% in June of 2024 to 43% in June of 2025. So we want to take that momentum that we did with third grade last year, and we want to work with a new group of students and have them increase even more, have their proficiency rate increase even more this year to 43%. And then we have three proposed interim goals. Interim goal 2.1 is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade three students who are proficient on the I-Ready ELA assessment will increase from 30% in June of 2024 to 32% in June of 2025. Interim goal 2.2 is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade three students who are well below average on the DIBELS assessment will decrease from 47% in June of 2024 to 45% in June of 2025. So again, we want to show that even when the kids don't meet that proficiency goal, we still want to see that they're growing. So that's what the second goal would measure. And then the third goal, interim goal 2.3, is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade three students who pass their ELA course will increase from 91% in June of 2024 to 92% in June of 2025.
Before you go on, just a quick question for clarity. Goal two, are you saying that these are new third graders?
So the first goal takes the group that we looked at last year, and then we're going to continue to increase their proficiency as their fourth graders. And then goal two is still doing work with the new third graders.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for that clarity.
No problem. We can go to the next slide, Admire. So goal three is a numeracy goal. And this is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade four students, which is the group we worked with last year, now they're in grade four, who are proficient on the end-of-year I-Ready math assessment will increase from 19% in June of 2024 to 21% in June of 2025. So again, same group of kids that we looked at last year, but different skills are being assessed in grade four. But we do still want to grow them over another year. And interim goal 3.1 would be the percent of economically disadvantaged grade four students who are proficient on the end-of-year I-Ready ELA assessment will increase from 16% in June of 2024 to 18% in June of 2025. And I know it says ELA, but we want to make sure that they are doing well in their ELA so that they can read what the math test is asking them to do. Part of, part of being able to solve these math problems is being able to understand what the question is asking you. So there are some ELA skills involved in taking the I-Ready math assessment. Interim goal 3.2, it would be the percent of economically disadvantaged grade four students who are either two or three levels below grade level on the I-Ready math assessment will decrease from 50% in June of 2024 to 48% in June of 2025. So the I-Ready assessment has different categories than DIBELS. So where the first two goals talked about being well below average, I-Ready uses the terminology of three levels below grade level, two levels below grade level. So we want to take the students who are either two or three levels below grade level and show that they're making growth. Even if they don't reach the proficiency goal, we want them to be growing so that they're a little bit closer to grade level. They're starting to close that gap. And then last interim goal 3.3 is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade four students who pass their math class will increase from 93% in June of 2024 to 94% in June of 2025. Next slide, Admire? So goal four is also, oh, I see that board member Woods has her hand up.
I, I'm just looking at the, listening to you from the previous page, and all of the percentages are one and two percentages. Are, are you, are you sure that they have to be that low? I mean, we just had a report that did 6%. Why so low? I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a, it's a really a stretch goal or really much of a goal, unfortunately. And I just came from a community meeting, and some of the community members were dismayed that we're celebrating such low percents of proficiency of students. So is there any way we can relook at that to make it, see if it can be pushed higher, make it more of a stretch goal?
So when we set these numbers, we basically looked at the trend data for the last few years, and then we use the trend data to set the goals. But we can certainly talk about it?
Yep. That would be appreciated.
Okay. So for goal four is another numeracy goal. This is This is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade three students who are proficient on the end of year eye-ready math assessment will increase from 21% in June of 2024 to 23% in June of 2025. And then the interim goals, 4.1 is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade three students who are proficient on the end of year eye-ready ELA assessment will increase from 30% in June of 2024 to 32% in June of 2025. That's the same as 3.1 where you need some ELA skills to be able to pass the math test. Interim goal 4.2 is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade three students who are two or three grade levels below grade level on the eye-ready math assessment will decrease from 49% in June of 2024 to 47% in June of 2025. And then interim goal 4.2 is the percent of economically disadvantaged grade three students who pass their math class will increase from 92% in June of 2024 to 93% in June of 2025. Edmire, next slide, please. Can we go to the, oh, thank you so much. For goal five, this is a high school goal and goal five would be the percent of grade nine students who earn 5.5 credits will increase from 62% in June of 2024 to 64% in June of 2025. The research shows that if a grade nine student is unable to earn 5.5 credits in their first year, they're not likely to be able to complete high school. So we want to monitor how our ninth grade students are doing throughout the school year. So interim goal 5.1 is the percent of grade nine students who pass their ELA course will increase from 72% in June of 2024 to 74% in June of 2025. Interim goal 5.2 is the percent of students who pass their grade nine math course will increase from 69% in June of 2024 to 70% in June of 2025. Interim goal 5.3 is the percent of students who pass their grade nine science course will increase from 69% in June of 2024 to 71% in June of 2025. And then interim goal 5.4 is the percent of students who pass their grade nine social studies course will increase from 72% in June of 2024 to 73% in June of 2025. And I think that was our last goal. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Williams Knight.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for questions. I would just like to address one of the comments that I just heard about some of the community members concerned that we're celebrating what they deem as low rates of percentage increases. I'm not sure if these are teachers in our schools or principals that had these concerns, but you know, I would just like to say, as a former principal and 36 years in the game, it is not easy. It is not easy to help children develop the confidence. First of all, if they have not had successes academically, to help them to develop the confidence to believe that they can do it. It's not easy to corral teachers also that may not have had successes in spite of what they may have tried to help them see the pedagogy of potential in our children. You know, it's a culture. When failure has been happening for years, it's a culture. And it's very hard, we hear AJ and Leslie saying that outcomes don't change unless adult behaviors, you know, do. Well, you know, it happens not only with the board, you know, but in schools too. And so it's the most difficult to get adults to really change behaviors. And you know, in addition to that, you know, we're dealing with this group of children that we chose to focus on, not even having the basic foundational skills. As I shared at the state of the schools, when you, you know, are trying to teach children just how to pronunciate a word, but you got a mask on, that's really hard. I know it sounds easy and people think, you know, we should be able to just in one year, move children 10%, 20%. It's just not that easy. I wish it were, if it was a magic bullet, God knows. You know, I would take it or do what I had to do to make it happen. But it is, you know, we want the changes to be real. You know, we're not cheating in any kind of way. This is our data and we got to say what it is. We got to say what it is. And this district, if we're honest, hasn't moved leaps and bounds in years. So to think coming out of a pandemic with a budget crisis going on and a bus driver shortage and language, you know, barriers, our children speak over 80 languages in schools and the poverty in this city and the violence in this city that we could just magically, you know, we were very proud. We were very proud and our principals felt very, very proud of their hard work. This took a lot to get our children from 13% in math to 21%. I mean, that is not easy. So I mean, I would take a meeting with these community folks to help them to understand all that's happening in our schools to try to combat some of that. It's not easy work and we felt really good about it, which is why we really want to build on it. We don't want to leave it. You know, we're trying innovative things, YZ. You know, that's another innovative thing to try to engage our children, CLRI. Another innovative, you know, everybody's not able to do those things. Once you get on a trajectory of success, yes, then it's easy because everybody knows what can happen, what you can do. But when you haven't had that, it's really, really hard to build the confidence in everybody to really believe and to say, even with less, you do more. That's a mindset. And until that mindset changes for everybody, you know, the changes won't happen as quickly as we would like for them to happen. But I'm very willing to meet with whoever had those kinds of concerns because our folks worked real, real hard and we are real proud of it. I mean, so much so that, you know, I spoke to someone yesterday, a high-ranking official who said to me, my office is getting calls because so many people are interested in coming back to the Buffalo Public Schools. They're gaining trust in the schools. Now, this is not even an educator. This is someone that works in government and they're saying that. So I do believe that we're on the right trajectory, but you know, I too wish it could be, you know, more faster. But sometimes, you know, it's not how fast you win the race. You know, it's about the journey, getting to the top. So we're going to keep on.
Madam Superintendent, the results that you got, the six percentages encourage people. That's why you're getting, I'm looking at this 1%, 2% and saying, are we underestimating what we can do? Can we make a little bit bigger of a stretch goal? That will encourage the community to say, well, if we can make five or six points in a year, in a few years, we'll actually be at something where we can say half of our children are there. That's the kind of hope they're looking for. So it's not downplaying what you're doing, it's asking for more.
So I mean, these are draft goals. The goals come from the board. And you know, the goals that we looked at, we're just looking at trend data to say that in the past, you know, the children either decreased or they made smaller goal, you know, smaller goals. And that's how we set these. But if this board comes to me and says that you want to set it at 10%, you can set it at, you know, however. I'm just saying to you though, that, you know, when we set goals, we have to be mindful that, you know, this is a superintendent's tenure and it should be done thoughtful. We have to look at what the trends are. We got to look at what the data is, what our children are experiencing. Do we have new teachers? Do we have teachers that are experienced? You know, how many schools do we have that are underperforming? Do they have everything they need in order to make this happen? It's a lot that goes into it. So however the board, you know, once you take a look at all of this and we're talking about it more and more, you know, hopefully by March, we'll be able to set some goals that, you know, everybody can be excited about and agree upon.
Yeah, I'm going to chime in here because we do have guests. And before I, you know, have AJ, you know, sort of interject and chime in on where we are in this process, I do want to acknowledge board member Shuda because she had to weigh in on this conversation.
Just quickly, do we have a number for high school graduation rate? Is there anything? I'm just, we haven't been told anything about that. And I'm just very curious about that before we start making big decisions.
Sure. So I will turn that over to Chief Bullock. I don't want to, you know, say something that, I mean, we know that we did not meet the goal. And again, I believe it's because, you know, we looked at it in their senior year and we quickly came up with something and we said we wouldn't decrease. But we did decrease and there's a reason why we decreased because they started their trajectory ticking under my predecessor when they were ninth graders. And there just was no way, we didn't have, they didn't have what they needed starting out in September. There was no way, if you need 15 credits, you can't earn 15 credits in one year. It's just not feasibly possible. But that's what happens when you quickly just, you know, your heart, your heart is leading and the reality of what can happen, you know, doesn't. So Chief Bullock, I don't have a problem with us sharing the tentative. If, I don't know if we can do that publicly or if we cannot.
We cannot do it publicly. I have no problem sending the number to the board, to their board email, but we may not share it publicly. Our graduation rate, like every other district, will not be finalized until around January itch. We're still doing a lot of cross-checking. Board member Shuda, you know how long it takes to really, we're at the point where we are now. We have some data in and we are going back and cross-checking with principals and saying, hey, did you get Ebony? Did you get Larry? Did you get, you know, so we're cross-checking right now. But I will send the soft number to the board members, to their email. Again, I implore you not to say it publicly, but it is not the goal. We did not hit the goal.
Okay, thank you. So you know, this presentation, you know, was very thoughtful. It certainly was based on trending data, I mean, real data. And, you know, I support, you know, Dr. Williams Knight's articulation of mindset. It's a mindset in this district that student outcomes will not change till adult behaviors change. That's part of, you know, this success with our students. So AJ, can you weigh in in terms of where we are with this process? AJ is a busy man, like most of us, but he's busier because, you know, he's the author of several books. And so welcome AJ. You listened in on this conversation. Can you weigh in?
Yeah, a few things. First, thank you for having us. We're happy to provide coaching support for the board and the administration whenever asked. A few things here. I appreciate that you opened up the conversation by walking through the full timeline of all the steps that have been taken. I've had a chance to check in with Leslie and go over some of the documents that the administration has provided. If you look at page seven of the PowerPoint presentation, it talks about the work that the board has done so far and is doing right now, leading up to the board trying to put together a new set of goals. One of the things that Leslie and I mentioned during the most recent workshop was that it normally takes an administration somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 60 days to be responsive once the board has put forth a set of draft goals and draft guardrails. So it is not unreasonable to me that it would take the administration until November, December to come back to you all with interims. And so that aspect of the timeline here makes perfect sense to me. I would recommend, however, given the timeline you all use for annual budget setting, I would recommend you expedite the process described on page seven such that the board adopts its final five-year goals and guardrails no later than January. And so the recommendation for the administration is March. And so it is a little bit tightening up of that timeline, but we would recommend you do that. Have that done by January. That way, the goals and guardrails that the board adopt can be available in ample time to have an influence, a meaningful influence on SY25-26. My concern is that if the board does not adopt those until March, there are a lot of key decisions for SY25-26 that will have already been made that won't be directly influenced by this. But other than that, this makes sense. The other recommendation that the administration has for having goals that describe what they're going to work on between now and June of 2025 in advance of this next round of goals taking place, that makes perfect sense to us. That is an incredibly reasonable approach and the administration is prepared to have that available today in rough draft form. I think it's highly useful for the board. That alleviates some of the pressure. I think it hopefully makes it easier for the board to be comfortable with receiving interim goals and interim guardrails in November and December with an eye toward trying to adopt them in January, recognizing that this entire school year through January, June of 2025 is already covered by the draft goals that the superintendent and her team have presented. And so that also makes perfect sense to us. As long as you can adopt the new five-year goals in January, I think the rest of the timeline works out perfectly. So those are the two main things regarding logistics and the timeline in response to what's on page seven. And it does make sense to have one-year goals that fill in the gap between now and the end of the current school year. And it does make sense to, that the administration will need a little bit more time to complete a set of interim goals and interim guardrails in response to the board's proposed goals and guardrails. But we would recommend that that be a little bit tighter timeline to be finished by January. That being said, there are a lot of other things that we could dive into, but I'm more than happy to just be available to be responsive to questions that the administration or the board may have.
Okay. So the floor is open. Any takers?
I don't have a comment. This is Sharon Bulton comment. I don't have a, can I speak? My hand has been up for a while. Thank you. I don't have anything that I would comment on with AJ and Leslie. I want to thank you both for the efforts and the devotion that you've shown us. I do, however, agree with Paulette Woods. Okay, I do agree with her. I feel that the goals should be higher. I don't have a problem if you don't achieve them, but to take one, to expect just 1% growth, then fine. But the message that's sent out is that we have low expectations if we don't send out something a little bit higher. Now, we boasted about how well we did and we knocked it out of the park. Okay? And in my mind's eye, I was wondering, well, if we had knocked it out, if we, if we had said that we wanted six points, if they would have delivered eight points. Do you understand what I'm saying? So for me, I'm just concerned that we have professionals working for us and that we set a reasonable expectation. Because when I look at the picture, I look at Johnny and Johnny is not reading anywhere where he should be reading. And if I only expect Johnny to grow 1% in one year, will Johnny ever get the chance by the time he gets to high, I mean, to junior, I mean, even ninth grade to be even reading at that level? And so, you know, I understand, but the expectations, and we talk about what our expectations are, we're talking about developing students that have to go and compete in the world. Okay? And around us, the expectations are higher. And so I have never had lower expectations for my children or anyone around me. I always believed that if I gave them examples to achieve, that they would achieve and they have, okay? Only because I told them they could. And so I'm wondering, you know, by putting such low expectations, are we saying this, we don't expect much? And if we fall short, are we afraid of falling short of the goal? But we tried, you know? Nobody's going to be punitive because we fell short. We tried, that's the issue. We wanted to see our kids grow a certain percentage. They did it or they didn't do it. We're still proud of our children, no matter. We're still proud of our children, no matter what. So that's what I have to say on that. It's, it's concerning to me after watching this for the time that I've watched it, that all the parties aren't being held accountable to produce at a higher level than what we've seen in the past. COVID is over, okay? And so we have to accept COVID at this point. Well, I don't know if it's over. I'm being told that it's coming, so I don't know. We better start putting masks on before we, we long. But anyway, I just wanted to say that. You know, I always have expectations and, and I, high expectations in anything that I do and anyone in my life. And so I just thought, and that's what I bring to the board. I'm not afraid of failure. What I'm afraid of is not trying. That's what I'm afraid of for this district. Thank you.
Thank you, President Coman. I see Board Member Larry Scott followed by Cindy and then followed by AJ. You're muted.
Kathy, AJ was up also when I was talking, so I'm not sure what that means.
Thank you, Kathy, Vice President Kathy Evans-Brown. So I, I was expecting today that we would get a draft of the, the five-year goals. We submitted three goals that were the five-year goals. And I was expecting for the, the district to refine. And it sounds like we're giving the district more time to work on that. And it looks like now we've shifted in our, for the annual goals, we now have five goals. So we have three goals that we agreed upon in our retreat. And we now have five annual goals for this, this year. And I think we, there was some consensus that it would be most effective to keep it at three goals. And then in looking at the annual goals, which I, I understand that you have your five-year long-term goal. And certainly then we need to kind of from there filter down and have our annual goals. And then within our annual goals, have interim goals. And maybe AJ, you can chime in here. But what I'm seeing, for example, on slide 10, our, our literacy, our goal to literacy, essentially the interim goals are also annual goals. My understanding is that you have your annual goal and then your interim goals should be at intervals leading up to the end of that year. So being June 2025. And then, for example, the interim goals, I would expect for literacy or dibble, dibbles assessment, we would have a goal for October, a goal for January, middle of the year, and then a goal for end of the year. Am I, am I, is it my interpretation correct on that?
Yes.
Chime in quickly. So although they are written, the interims are written as if they're full-year goals, each of them have, like, when we talk about I-ready, there's a BOI that would, we would report on in the, in the fall. There's a middle of year that would happen in the middle of the year. So there are, each of those interim goals, although they're, they look like they're a full-year goal, they happen several times throughout the year. And that's what we, what we would be reporting on throughout the school year.
Okay, so, but I think it would be helpful to have them written that way. So just pulling numbers out of my head, you know, if you have a goal that you want 30% to be proficient by, by June, I think what we want to do then is write by Oc-, for October, October maybe is too soon. January, you want to have, you want to reach the goal of 27%. If, if we're starting at, let's say, 23, 24%, so that there's an interval or an actual interim goal leading up to that annual goal of 30%.
Are you, are you wanting a response to it? Is it appropriate for me to respond to his question?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think the challenge, your underlying thinking about the process is correct. I think what's challenging is you're applying it in the wrong place. The items that are on pages nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13 are the administration's recommendations for goals that would only apply to this year. They are not responsive to the board's suggested goals for the next five years. And so they aren't designed in the way that you're thinking because they're trying to accomplish a different task. And so when you have five-year goals, I think what you're generally describing is what you're going to see. But the administration is not having that for you today. What they're presenting to you is a recommendation to have essentially a set of goals that only last for this one year. That's not responsive to what you created during the workshop. And so it's, this isn't going to look like what you were expecting. The second thing that they're recommending is that, that you then give them a little bit more time to finish creating a set of interim goals, refining the exist, the goal, the draft goals and guardrails that you put forward at the workshop. And then bring that forward. Now, to your point, it is certainly the board's decision whether you want to modify the timeline that the board reached a consensus on at the workshop. What I've said to you is, I don't think that is an unreasonable request by the administration. But ultimately, that is a board decision. That is neither administration decision nor is it our decision as your coach. That's certainly an appropriate thing for you all to discuss here. But is it a reasonable request on the part of the administration? I, I would suggest to you that it is, only because that is a normal amount of time that it takes, 30 to 60 days for them to come back. But that's part of why you're not seeing what you're expecting to see, is because what's being presented to you is not what you were expecting to have presented. They're bringing you in a slightly modified recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Just one more thing I want to raise. I privately raised issue with the amount of standardized testing that our students received. I think it was in the month of January. And certainly standardized testing serves a purpose. It, it gives, it's a way for us to measure. And so I'm not in any way saying that we get rid of all of it. But to me, it's, it's unnecessary, it's not best practice for us to be administering multiple assessments, the I-ready and the dibbles to our third and fourth graders. And then we also had a mock state assessment that was administered last January. So I'm real, it's, I'm personally requesting that we look at that practice because it is taking a lot of time away from instruction and intervention that many of these students need. It, to me, is not helpful in any way for us to have both an I-ready number and a dibbles number on our students. I think we, we choose one and that's what we should administer.
All right, thank you. Duly noted, Board Member Scott, Board Member Cindy, and then followed by Leslie.
Thank you. So I do want to express honestly some disappointment. I think that communicating some of this to us in advance would have been helpful. I know our ask was that this was submitted to us by the 30th with a specific set of tasks. And, you know, this came today at 11:12. I don't know, I know I didn't see it until much later in the afternoon personally. And then tried to go through and digest and look for, right, the answers to what was asked. Only to see, and I don't know what slide it was, I don't remember, in that timeline, right? Our goals listed. But the task at hand was to provide us with the data, like the data set to fill in for our goals and some potential interims. And if you thought that there was opportunity for a shift or change, right, to present that. And I think I just would have liked some communication in advance instead of the day of. And I know this is something, and, and I've heard, you know, Madam Superintendent, I, I heard you say it today, right? Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And we do a lot of things at the last second and expect, right, everybody to be able to digest and understand. And hearing from AJ, right, that this is acceptable, we did, and we knew going in, we gave you a short timeline. We discussed that with the data team who were present in the meeting. We discussed the realities surrounding that. And I think we as a district get so caught up in defending outcomes out of fear for whatever might happen, right, that often we don't just have some of these conversations, right? It would have been helpful, I think, to hear prior to this moment or reading it in the slides in advance. Even talking about the graduation rate. I didn't go into it expecting that we were going to necessarily hit it for all of the reasons that you guys have shared with us over the last year. I don't know, and I can't speak for my colleagues, I can truly only speak for me, right? We know the realities. But we still need to know where we're at and have that idea and not be afraid to say it and recognize it. So I just find myself disappointed in the way this rolled out. And, you know, at this point, I don't know that I'm prepared to digest all of it because I haven't had enough time to look at what you guys gave us and really read each thing and take it in and understand what you're saying over the course of the next year. I do want to lift up what Board Member Scott raised in terms of if we are going to adopt the short-term one year, I do think there's still, you know, some further discussion that would be required from what you've presented as a goal and an interim goal, just to make sure language-wise, we know what we and when we expect to have updates coming through. And I think that is a valid question and concern. But, you know, I, I don't have a question at this moment. I just, just, I'm just disappointed.
So, you know, I would say on behalf of, you know, myself, I won't even say my staff, I apologize that you just got it. We have school opening tomorrow. We've got a lot of competing priorities. That is not an excuse, that is a reality, that's a reality. It was a very short period of time to get done what the board wanted. We could have met and we could have just thrown numbers in, but we're really taking this process really seriously. And we didn't want to come to the board with just, you know, numbers that we just threw in. We know that the board spent a lot of time that day giving a lot of thought to the goals that you came up with. And we wanted to be respectful of the process that's in place. So on behalf of just me, you know, I will take that. And I will apologize that, you know, over two weeks, that we weren't able to come back to this board. And, and what I've heard AJ saying is that it's, it's reasonable, it's not unreasonable to give a district some time to grapple with 200-plus pages of data, not just from one year, but from several years and looking at trends and to see, you know, what could be a realistic stretch goal that we could, you know, identify for our children and come back to the board with that. You know, we came up with the thought of this year, we could have just said, we don't need goals this year. You know, we'll just work on getting the professional develop, you know, the, the plan in place where we share with you for the year, how we'll report out and coming up with the forms. But because of the synergy from our principals, which is where the rubber hits the road and the teachers for meeting goals, you know, we thought it would be a disservice to not do something with those third graders that we did so much with and all of our children. So we thought we would come up with some goals for this year. But if the board, I mean, it is the will of the board. And if the board decides that, you know, you want to focus on August of 2025 through August of 2030 and getting the infrastructure in place for just that, you know, certainly that's what we will do.
So what I can say, Madam Superintendent, and I didn't mean to cut you off, is this, this is exactly what I was referring to, right? I'm sorry, but, right? And I, I don't, I don't necessarily need that. And I understand, and, and AJ is right. And we knew it going in, right, that we were asking for something, right, lofty in a small amount of time. But what we would have needed is communication, right, to us to say, you know what? We hear you, but we don't know that we can produce what you're asking for in the timetable that you're asking for it, which allows us to kind of regroup and rethink what that looks like instead of trying to get it done and then give us something, which you did. You gave us something, not what we asked for and not in advance for us to digest, but we did get something. And I'm not arguing that at all. We definitely got something from you and that is appreciated. And I, I think that the way AJ articulated it for us, it is definitely helpful to know that we can further discuss the one-year goals that were presented to us and maybe, you know, kick back some recommendations in terms of, of the way this actually spreads itself out. But that our lofty five-year goals, right? You guys are still going to be working behind the scenes between now and December to still offer out what that looks like for us to be able to move forward. But again, I wanted to highlight just, you know, as we move through this process, it's requiring us to shift how we are doing things. And I do know, and I will say, it is common practice for things to come to the board kind of late, right? Like, we do know that. And, and it's, it's going to take time. Like, it's just a process, right? Like, we need to kind of shift the way we're doing things. And in this one, I just, I know that I don't know that I can make a decision tonight because I don't know that I've really thoroughly, like, taken it all in or had the time to take it in based on when I got it right now and just make sure I'm understanding the language.
That's fair, that's fair. I mean, I don't think we were asking for the board to vote on anything tonight. We're presenting it tonight for the board to take a look at, think about, discuss, and come back to us with recommendations. So that's fair. And I just want to say for the record, I'm never a person that says, I apologize, but. I stand in my stuff. And so if the board is disappointed that you got this late, this is one of those things where there is an opportunity for us to get better at that. When we're looking at a timeline, the board just has to let me know when you'd like to get it. If you'd like to get it the week before, then we put that in the timeline and that's when things come to the board. So, you know, if that's what the board would like to see, you just have to let me know too what that expectation looks like and not, you know, have language that says we wanted earlier, earlier, like how much earlier?
This one, I think we have the email.
Let me interject, let me interject Cindy. That's Cindy's opinion. And, you know, it's appreciated, everybody's opinions are appreciated. But I do like the idea that the superintendent is talking about looking at the growth that was made last year. 6% is 6%. We have never, on this board, received the kind of data that she's presented, her and her team, since I've been on this board, and it's been five years. So I'm going to give her credit and her team, you know, for making those stretches. This is a growing process for all of us. When we talk about student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, we're all in this together. And this is not a forum right now to, you know, go backward. We want to move forward. With that, Cindy, did you have anything else to say? Because I see enough, some other hands from the board. Shooter and Jen is on, on, online to make a comment.
No, ma'am, I appreciated you interrupting me to say your piece and I will stop now, message received.
May I offer two, based on the board members' comments so far, may I offer two recommendations before, before I need to jump?
Yes.
So one thing that I heard earlier that Sharon mentioned and that I heard you echoing were thoughts about the amount of growth. And so the way that we generally coach boards to think about, has the superintendent's recommendation for growth, is it robust enough? And so I heard Sharon saying, it sounds like the growth that you're recommending is too small. I'd expect it. I'd expect to see more growth. Sharon, am I interpreting your comments correctly, Sharon? And so the way that we generally coach boards to think about this is to ask a different set of questions of your superintendent. So here's the first recommendation. Anytime that you have a worry that the amount of growth that the superintendent is recommending is too small, instead of making that as a statement, ask the question first, what has been our average growth over the last five-year period? And so you really want to ground your thoughtfulness about how much growth is appropriate to expect first in some sense of what has been our norm? What have we been able to accomplish over the last five years? And so if our average growth over the last five years has been 1% per year, then an administration putting forth a recommendation that the priority area will continue to grow 1% per year, I would suggest is certainly inappropriate. That I'd certainly expect to see the purpose of a goal to be outperforming our five-year trend line. But if our average growth over the last five years has been 0.5% growth per year on average, then all of a sudden, 1% growth seems more reasonable. But the first piece of coaching I'd offer is ground your sense of, is the amount of growth we're seeing reasonable and what has been the normative growth over the last five-year period? And so that's a question I ask first. And then if the superintendent says, well, we've been growing on average 1% per year, then I would be highly skeptical about any proposal that maintains the status quo at that point. Because really, when you're setting goals, you're wanting to see an inflection that outperforms the status quo. So that's recommendation one. It's just a different way to think about and talk about the conversation of, are we seeing enough growth? The second recommendation I have for the board is, you certainly did not receive, to Cindy's point, you did not receive what you had asked for this evening. And so my second recommendation to you is, before you end this call, be explicitly clear with what you expect next and by when. I would generally suggest that you pick a date no later than October 30th, maybe sooner than that, of when you expect to see a set of interim goals and interim guardrails aligned to the draft goals and guardrails you put forth. At absolute latest, I'd recommend October 30th. And I'd recommend that you further put forward the expectation that you receive, whatever that draft is, at least a week before the date they're going to be considered. So if you consider them on October 30th, then I wouldn't receive them any later than October 23rd. Or you may decide that you want to receive them by October 16th, in which case I wouldn't recommend receiving them any sooner, any later than October 9th. But I would strongly recommend, as a board, do not leave this phone call without providing that level of clarity. Because right now, it is not clear what the new expectation beyond today is. And so those are the two things I'd recommend is, ask your superintendent about what has the trend line been and to what extent are we outperforming or underperforming or just remaining stagnant with the trend line? And the second is, do not leave this call without being clear about what happens next. What is the exact expectation you have of your superintendent? By what date? And then generally speaking, for decisions of this magnitude, you would want the materials for that at least seven days prior. So those are the two recommendations that I wanted to offer. I'm going to have to turn off my camera for a moment, but if I'm needed, please call on me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, A.J.
I think I had Leslie, you had your hand up.
I was going to reiterate some of the same things that A.J. just said. And I think it's really important for the board to have clearly outlined written expectations about what they are requesting, including timelines. So, you know, one of the recommendations that we have made and that I think the board needs to consider pretty soon is, what is their timeline for agenda items being presented? This is something big, and there's a lot of data and understanding that's needed behind this, especially since it was presenting some things that weren't on the board's, you know, requests from our retreat. So I think that is something, you know, we had a proposed timeline that we sent around. I know that's been sent to most everyone that there were, you know, at least two weeks for some information like this so that the board members can get it, can review it, can ask their questions of the administration. I appreciate the PowerPoint that was put together tonight, but I think having the expectation that people are going to, you know, be walk through that and understand it and sort of get and digest what they need from it is maybe a little ambitious right now. So if we can have, you know, like, one thing come out of today's retreat would be that, you know, like, time and communication. So if we can communicate about what the board absolutely wants and by when it wants it, I think that is most helpful. And I think readdressing what the board drafted and what that looks like in terms of interims, how the superintendent proposes meeting those, what those interims look like, how they're going to be measured, what the timeframe is on those, what the goal targets are on those as well. You know, how much time do y'all need from the staff perspective to get that prepared? And when shall the board expect that? That would be my stand-up recommendation along with A.J.
Can I interject here? One other thing, please. So in moving forward, I would like to make sure that I am offered the opportunity to be a part of the conversation that's being had between staff and the superintendent and the Council of Great City Schools. I want to make sure that I am a part of that conversation. I will make myself available to be available to do that at all times. I want to make sure that we stay on the right path here because I sincerely believe that the staff is working to do the best that they know how at this point. And I want to make sure that that continues to be the mindset, okay? And I want to make sure that we stay focused on making sure that we achieve our goals with this project. And so moving forward, Superintendent, I'm respectfully asking that you involve me in these conversations that we're having with our counselors, our consultants, okay? Ebony, Laura, did you hear that as well? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I think that it'll help gel some stuff together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jim Mikulski, have her hand up.
Thank you, Vice President Evans-Brown. I, so everybody knows I've been kind of out of the loop for the last few months. So this, right here, I needed to kind of be able to understand where we were at, what really happened in the retreat, what we're looking for today. I did have a conversation with Leslie earlier, kind of got a heads up of what we were looking for. And I'm just going to be honest. Everybody had very valid reasons for their concerns, for their participation, for their words. I do understand. No one, I don't believe in any way, shape, or form anybody is downplaying the actual work at hand from any aspect, from the board members to the superintendent and their team. This is a large onion that's being peeled back of how we've done things previously. And we're using that, not, you know, Superintendent Williams, from what I gather, there was an expectation and it wasn't met. And if, from what I'm hearing, and I don't believe I'm out of pocket with saying this, just having the maybe interim communication of, you know what, we're just, we're going to bring you a presentation, but we're not quite where we said we were going to be. That would have been, I believe, the communication people are looking for. We used to get things, you know, last minute and whatnot. But I do understand, first of the year, everything's going on. So if we just really take this opportunity, and this, I really feel like I'm outsider looking in almost because I have to catch up with everything between the presentation and everything that I know I've missed in the past couple of months. I would not be able to if we didn't get the recommendations from A.J. and from Leslie to really kind of put some standards and some real next steps with some dates and some timelines that are coherent to the timeline that you put up there in the presentation. But, you know, for our own work. And even if there's like, you know, maybe a self-interest check as to what we're doing and why we're doing it, it would make sense because I feel like a lot of folks were dismissed in what they were presenting from the superintendent to Cindy. I feel like people's opinions are not opinions. This is actually how they feel about the work that they're doing. And to feel as though your voice wasn't, you know, and moving on, that, to me, felt dismissive. And I'm just hoping that we can all get past that. We're doing this training. I feel like they put some really great next steps in place. I just needed to comment on how, if I was to leave this without the proposed next steps, I'd be a hot mess and every one of you would get a call and I'd be like, what happened and what are we supposed to do next? So I just appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Board Member Mikulski. Paulette Woods?
I just want to say, this is a joint effort. We're all working hard together to move ourselves to focus on student outcomes. And since we're new at this and we don't know what reasonable expectations are, when we have A.J. on the line telling us 20, 30 to 60 days is reasonable expectations, and we didn't know it and we gave two weeks, I don't think mea culpa is unnecessary. I think we all need to check ourselves and grow and set reasonable expectations. So thank you, Superintendent, for giving us the best you could with the two-week dateline we gave you. And I look forward to you getting clearer direction from us and more realistic guidelines and working with you so we can all grow in this process. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Board Member Woods. Board Member Dr. Ann Rivera, you're up next.
I would like to get us to circle back towards our next steps. So we've been given some things for consideration. I think the consensus of the group has been, we need to take it, think about it, start working through all of these pieces. There's been some conversation about timeline and deadlines. What are our next steps, then?
Okay, so it certainly sounds like, I don't have the answers, but I'm going to chime in.
That's okay.
It certainly sounds like Superintendent, the superintendent is asking the board to look at this year, '24-'25. And they did a presentation on what that will look like in terms of goals. Sharon, as well as President Kotman, as well as Board Member Woods, talked about their a need for the superintendent and her staff to revisit those percentages. They thought that those percentages were too low in terms of, you know, well, in lieu of stretching, you know, those. And so A.J. said what we should be asking, which I thought was brilliant, what has been the average growth? What's been the norm? Is the amount reasonable, you know, et cetera, over the last five years? I don't know if the data team, yeah, I don't know if the data team have those, right?
Yeah. Same. So what I'm curious about is timeline. So I think you laid it out for us. Give us a good summary here. So the question is timeline. A.J. mentioned October. So are we talking about an October work session? Do we need to dedicate time in our next work session? Do we need to allow folks to give us a response to set up a timeline that's feasible? That's what's outstanding in my mind right now.
And so can I chime in here? So Chair, Chair Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, I think the question is, what's reasonable for the staff timelines-wise? Now, I appreciate that you were able to summarize, you know, A.J.'s statements or whatever. But as you said, A.J. was real clear. I don't know how much work it takes. Dr. Paulette Woods, you were real honest about saying, we don't know what reasonable expectations are because we've never done this before. We've never had a superintendent to give us data. Okay, never. Okay, and as much as I tried to get it, I got pushback from trying to get the data from board members. So it's amazing, you know, that we finally are getting some, and now we're pushing back for that. So it's like a catch-22 for me. Google me if you don't believe it. And so I think that in trying to adjust this, I think that next week, we have an additional meeting coming up for a committee. And if we need to put aside a special meeting in the future for this, I think that we can do that, Madam Chair. I just think that there are a lot of issues that are pending in this district with school opening and that in respect of the superintendent and her staff, who I want to applaud because it is not easy to crunch these numbers. And I want you to be encouraged, Ebony and Laura. I saw the conversation that we had during the superintendent's or our State of the Union, how you listened to what I did and how you put together those timelines and things like that. I respect that. I appreciate that in between the things that you're doing. So thank you. I don't know if you noticed, but I did see it. So I want to shout out to you for that. And typically, you do try to deliver, okay? We may not get it right the first time, but we don't have a problem trying again to get it to do best. So with that said, what's real reasonable as for us being able to have an idea of when you can gather the percentage averages of the growth in our district over the past five years? And do you think it's fair? Well, we'll leave five years in because A.J. said five years. And I can remember thinking, two years with COVID. Should we go back seven years? You know what I mean? But we didn't have growth during that period of time. So I don't even want to go back further than five years because I know what was going on during that period of time. So what do you guys think? Dr. Williams, do you want to defer to them? Or what do you want, how do you want to do it? Because that's going to determine our next steps is what it's going to do.
Are we looking at the five-year goals or the goal for this year, the goals that we set for this year, the five-year?
Well, I am in favor of doing the bridge goals. I thought that was a great idea. I didn't, I appreciated that. So I need to feel from the board how they feel about it. If they agree that the bridge goals were great, then, you know, but nevertheless, in doing either goals, we're going to need that information trying to move forward. So I think the, are we in favor of the bridge goals, people, or not? I need an idea, who's not in favor of doing bridge goals and allowing the superintendent additional time?
Now, when you speak of bridge goals, what does that mean?
Well, that means this year, we talked on the timeline about putting together at a certain time from a certain period, five-year goals. And the superintendent had mentioned that they don't want to not take their eye off of the third graders from last year. So I'm not exactly sure. Let them explain how they feel that is. But this is their work. And all I want to do is monitor and not try to, I want to be, you know. And A.J. writes, Sharon is correct. The last five years isn't likely to be a useful average. Looking at the past two years probably makes more sense, given the circumstances. A.J. wrote that in his comments. Thank you, A.J.
So is that realistic, Dr. Bullock and Dr. Shumoski and Dr. Williams-Night, last two years?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if I may, I was going to say, if you look back at that 230-plus-page booklet, you have it. You have the trend data. And so the trend data does show, albeit small glimpses. But again, remember, we're setting goals for the neediest groups of students. And so our neediest kids who need so much, my mother would say, school support, they're school-dependent. Our most school-dependent children, they're not growing five, six, seven, eight points per year. They're growing .51, 1.5. I believe Dr. Shumoski-Peters and C.A.O. Botticelli can support that. Look at the data. But we can go back to the book and maybe present that again to you. But you have the trend data, and that's what we based our numbers on, is that trend. And that's what we're seeing, remember, for the economically disadvantaged, the students that are most dependent on us. And I would say that while, while the trend shows small, small growth, that doesn't mean that our expectation is low and that we're going in lowballing. We're going in every day with teachers and principals saying, let's gather these kids up, let's look at your resources, let's do everything we can to push these kids on. But if we look trend data, that's, that's how they're growing. So I thought I heard A.J.
Can I suggest we get an executive summary of 200-page documents? I've never presented a county exec or anyone who's in making positions 200 pages of anything. I give them, as Jim Barnes does, we get executive summaries that we can read and digest that are one or two paragraphs because we are not educational experts. So I love your 200 pages, but give me two or three.
So that will be our work. We want to do that. We want to be able to do that. That's our work. I thought I heard A.J. say that January would be reasonable because we've got to put some infrastructure things in place, like creating the forms that we can present to the board on a monthly basis. You know, looking at, you know, if we're changing things, when, you know, like when you expect to have presentations, you know, and making sure that we're all clear on that prior to meetings. There was one more thing that we said that we would do while we're analyzing, you know, those 200 pages. That's, that's the work that, you know, that we do. We want to be able to come back to you with, you know, what's reasonable and share with you the rationale for why we came up with, if it's two percentage points here, but maybe eight percentage points in something else. We want to be able to share, you know, how we came up with those figures. But I thought I heard him say that January, we proposed March, that we would come back with that. And I thought I heard him say that, you know, he would be concerned if we went out to March, but January would be reasonable. Is that correct, A.J.?
Adopt no later than January 2025, the new goals.
Yeah, and if I may, I think that's very reasonable from Laura and my team. We have started breaking it down. We produced a smaller document of 26 pages for you. Still not the one or two. I get you. Board Member Woods, but we have, we have, I don't want to, I don't want to say that we have the bandwidth, the budget crunch hit my department hard and we have all hands on deck. But I think by October, we could successfully have that year-long calendar in addition, the data that you requested, because we've already started with the data. We have things produced. And given where we are, when I'm looking at our September, I think if you give us to October, we could, we can do that. We can have both for you.
Can I, I just want to interject a little bit. I put in the, in the chat, the link to the document that we created on the day at the close of the retreat with you all. And it had the deliverables that we were expecting for August 30th. What the board was asking the staff to do was to go back and give some input, you know, some, fill in the blanks for what the highest leverage, highest need student group might be in those rough drafts, also to validate the indicators or evidence of college and career. And I think just to make sure that the board understands, this is what, you know, we were expecting to talk about tonight, is are you all with the district's input around those? And those were economically disadvantaged was the highest leverage, highest need group. And then the, they came back with some indicators around college and career readiness. Is the board comfortable with those? I think that was the expectation, was that we would get clear because they cannot start to create, you know, data trends for past two years, five years, seven years, 20 years, unless they're understanding what that trending is for. So if you say, go, you know, do data trends for the past two years, they have to be very specific about what that group is because that's going to be the group you're basing the forward goals on. So again, I think it's important to understand, that was the ask from last time, is the board needed those blanks filled in. So with those blanks filled in, do you feel that you have that information? I would, you know, I think y'all might need a pause on this, just to be sure.
Leslie, why don't I? So it's on, it's on slide six. And so the part, we did fill in some blanks. And so, Board, if I may, around your college and career readiness draft goal, we filled in the percentage of BPS students, and maybe I went too fast, probably wasn't clear, I wasn't clear. The percentage of BPS students who graduate within four years, so here's one of the blanks that you wanted us to fill in. So we said graduate within four years, demonstrating proficiency by earning at least one college credit, receiving a technical endorsement, or C-DOS endorsed diploma. Will increase from, now we can start filling in that data piece if you can tell Laura and I that that first part, that your idea of college and career readiness can be determined by that first part, the percentage of BPS students who graduate within four years demonstrating proficiency by earning at least one college credit, receiving a technical endorsement, or C-DOS endorsed diploma. If that blank is okay with you, and I know you still need time, then Laura and I can fill in the data part.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I would recommend just, you know, typing that in on a simple document, not a PowerPoint, something they can read, you know, very cleanly, and just sending your response to that request back to the board for them to review. And then as you, Sharon suggested, next week, there's some, another committee meeting, maybe that's a time for the board to really come back and look at that and see, okay, did this, is this responsive to what we felt like we wanted? Are we good with these three overall goals? Because again, it doesn't help for the superintendent, your team, to waste time, you know, doing, drafting monitoring report format, you know, calendars, anything like that, until you're clear about what the board wants. So I would, I would say, let's pause the, you know, pause on moving forward with the other until they get a response needed for that. The other ask in that, for that, was to just start coming up with some ideas about what interims might be. And I think that would be, it's especially important for the guardrails because the guardrails are, you know, they're value statements. They're not, there's no data to it. The interims will be the data that they're going to measure. And so the board getting some understanding from the administration, what you might look at, what is, you know, what you might measure for equitable allocation, what you might measure for culture and climate. So I would, you know, suggest that that might be the, you know, how you finish this meeting, setting a deadline for responding to that. The board needs to respond to the suggestions and the board needs to say, yes, we're comfortable with these drafts. This is what we want. At that point, y'all can begin to develop those numbers. It's unrealistic to develop those numbers if the board hasn't decided, so.
Now, Leslie question. So it, it sounds like you just referred to what we talked about in your retreat, and that's for the 24, the 25 through 2030 document, correct?
Yes, your long-term student outcome goals, right.
So in terms...
Listening to what all this has been about, right?
Okay, so that's the main trust that Larry Scott thought we were going to talk about today. So the Superintendent presented, her and her team presented the 2425 goals, potentially for the board to marinate on. And so what would be the next steps for that? And that would be something that the board would chime in on. Because the Superintendent is asking to do more work with those last year third graders who are now fourth graders. So we're talking, you know, current, and our current, you know, third graders. What's your pleasure on that?
My, my suggestion again would be to go back and get the board's goals, the long-term board goals established, that you all agree upon what you're going to request they report on over the next, you know, from 25 to 30, that you all get set on that. If there's, you know, you know, absolutely, keep going. Like if you're making, you know, great progress and, you know, you've done a lot of, put a lot of things in to address the, you know, the board goals that they set last year, then keep pushing on that. But I would not sort of step back, concentrate on that while you're, before you have this bigger piece in place. It's long-term thinking. This year needs to be, you know, like focused, you know, she needs to be focused from when y'all adopt these for real, on how she's going to build her team and staff to get these done over the next five years. But first of all, the board needs to agree, this is what we want done. And again, I would recommend just sending out the filled-in-the-blanks version that you had, Dr. Bullock, from the PowerPoint, resend that to the board so they can look at that. Y'all decide when you want to meet and agree upon that.
Okay. I need to interject something here. We still have an evaluation that we have to finish and we have to give the superintendent some goals for this year. So for our immediate need, we need to know, we need as a board to wrap this up within the next 30, 40 days, 45, 41 days. We need to wrap this up as far as the superintendent's annual evaluation, which has to include in there her goals for this year. So I see that this can be used to help us do that because they're outlined. And so the board, in my opinion, needs to take a look at the proposed goals that were given for this year so that we can get this done by September the 15th. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I said 45 days. Actually, it's only supposed to be another 20 days or whatever. We need to get this done, if you'll allow us additional time, Madam Superintendent, by the end of the month. Okay? That we have to get done. Okay, that has to be done. Technically, I think it's the 17th that it should be done in your contract. I can't remember offhand, but I think it's around that time. And so we need to get that in place this year. So I don't know how you want to work that board, but we definitely need to get the short-term goals in place for this year as soon as possible because we can't complete her evaluation without it. That's where we are. I need some feedback. Do you have a problem with that? Anne, what do you think?
So I think that for me, I need at least some time to look at this. I think this has potential. I would like to really consider it. I do agree that we need interim goals to cover this year and that's in alignment with what A.J. and Leslie are both saying. So that's good. That works well. I think that if we could devote, if one of the committees next week for the work session could devote a little time to allow us to circle back and have a conversation, I think we'll be able to move forward a little bit more because what I'm hearing in the conversation so far is there's some confusion between what we're doing with the five-year goals and timeline and what we're doing with the interim goals and timeline. In this way, if we devote time just with the interim goals and with approving the draft goals, just those two things, I think that'll clarify the conversation, we'll be able to move forward a little more quickly. That would be my proposal.
Just terminology, and you're, when you're saying the interim goals, you mean the 21 year?
The 20, excuse me. Yes, there is some drift. They were labeled interim in the, there's interim in the PowerPoint, so I've hit my language, but that is what I mean, yes.
Okay.
I was going to clear it up. Any other comments on that?
My feedback is very simply, the other 50% of our job is hire superintendent, fulfill a contract evaluator. We need one-year goals for that. So my vote is separate the two things and accept a one-year and then put some timeframes for the five-year goals. But we, Board, we need to do our job, okay? We need a one-year goal, we need to complete the evaluation. And you're saying it's September 17th. Our legal obligations are something we have to fulfill. That's my vote.
Any other comments? Okay, so then...
President Paul, if we're focusing now just on annual goals and refining those, I don't think we're far off, in my opinion. I think we can work on those and maybe there could be some dialogue on email to take some feedback and make some changes and then determine if we need to have this on an agenda next week during one of our work sessions.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, so Lou, A.J.?
I stepped away for a moment. Have the dates been set for when the board will review the draft interim goals, interim guardrails, draft goals, draft guardrails for your 2025 to 2030?
Okay, no.
Did you all set a date for that while I was out?
Not yet. Here's what we're working on. Okay, so our immediate need is to address the evaluation. So realistically, Larry, a great idea as far as framing that, having it sent out and board members giving their feedback. I think that our, at our next board meeting, we will, our committee meeting, we will allow time for that. And all board members have their opportunity to read and get us back. Now, with that said, that gives us a week to deal with that. And that, I'm sorry, it's a short time, but if you feel you need more time, we'll allow more time. And we can talk about that briefly at our board meeting and we will set up an additional timeframe. Dr. Caressis, I'm going to need you to coordinate establishing the annual meeting with the superintendent at the board, which will probably be a special board meeting, where we just deal with the Superintendent and her evaluation. We've done that for the past 18 years, so that's how it's done. Are you in agreement with that, Dr. Williams? Okay, so now, here's how we work. From now to Friday, okay, Dr. Williams, can you have your staff sent over to the board by tomorrow morning, if not tonight? The, your, your, what did we call them? We didn't call them interim. We called them your benchmark goals or whatever, your goals that you're going to set up just for this year that you would like to, the board to weigh in on that. If you can have them sent over by tomorrow morning. Board members, if you can have that review, do you, by the week, by Monday morning, okay, your feedback and everything back by Monday morning. Dr. Evans-Brown, that is your purview. You would take a look at that, compile that all together and send out an email to the board by Monday evening, if you will. And then on Wednesday, we will talk about it briefly at our meeting. Dr. Will Caressis will set up our time schedule that we will meet with the superintendent so that we can review her, do her annual evaluation. And then that's that piece of this puzzle, okay? And I would imagine it would be within the next two weeks that we would have a special board meeting. That's my expectations. Now, the goals for the 2530, okay, it was recommended by A.J. that we allow until January. So what I'm going to do is, I think that we should have, before we go on, and let me know if this is reasonable, staff, before we go on break for Thanksgiving, that we have that together. I heard, Ebony, I thought I heard you say, Dr. Bullock, I thought I heard you say that you can do that. Did I hear you say that? Okay. And do you feel that's too much time or you need, you need less time?
By Thanksgiving is more than enough time. I'm sure we can get it done by October.
Okay, so if you can, if she can get it done, so if you can get it done by October the 31st or before, okay, then we will plan for November that we will do a session and we will review that in our committee meeting, the first committee meeting, which is a big committee meeting if I, if it's normally traditional. Is that okay with everyone? The beginning, by November, we'll look at the 20...
The challenge is that will make it very hard for you to have them adopted by January.
So...
Why we have a whole 30 days?
Yeah, but the problem is, there's, there's going to be back and forth. So what normally happens in this process is the superintendent and her staff will bring you the interim goals and interim guardrails.
Okay.
And then the, that will trigger some different thinking on the part of the board. You'll realize, okay, that's not quite what we meant, that doesn't exactly meet our expectation. And so there will be some back and forth. So what you should generally expect is that at the time that you receive that rough draft interim goals and interim guardrails, there's probably going to be two or three more meetings bef... there's probably going to be two or three more meetings before you all settle in on the final goals and guardrails that you're going to adopt. So if you don't do that until mid to late November, you, given the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, you are almost certainly pushing back to February or March. And so if you want to try to make a January deadline, I think the absolute latest that you can receive it is probably the 23rd of October, and the board then consider it no later than the 30th of October, something along that timeline. Will then allow you to have that back and forth during November and December, despite the holiday season. And then set you up to vote, to finalize your five-year goals and guardrails in January.
Okay, so, so Dr. Bullock, you heard that. And so you being the head of the class, that you've always been as a student, like your daughter is now, in Howard University, we, we sort of expect you to pull that off before the 23rd if you can. Because you said you can do it. So if you can do it by on that time, then we will be able to do it. Do you feel comfortable with that? You, Laura, are you feel, Dr. Sumaski Peters, you guys are good, okay? Dr. Williams, your staff seems to be okay. Are you okay with it if they're okay with it? Dr. Williams, you okay with it if they're okay with it? Okay, all right. So that's our timeline for now. Now, Dr. Will Karesis, I'm going to need you to schedule two meetings. I don't know how you're going to work it out, but we can do, if we need to do a special meeting in November. Or at the end of October, we can do our first meeting. And then we can have another meeting in November, and I hopeful, hopefully we'll be straight by then. Do you guys think that's a timeline that we can all live with? Anyone think there's a problem with that?
I want to go back. Hold on a second, President Kotman. I just want to interject. So the document that Leslie put in the chat, where does that fit? Leslie? Because it's kind of the 2530 goal.
The 20, the document that's in the chat was the document that came from the afternoon after you all had decided on what you needed from the staff. That document was created. Those are the drafts that you came up with, everything that was on paper.
Uh huh. So then that, oh, yeah, so that's, okay.
Yeah, the staff who fill in the blanks, which they've done that. They gave you some fill-in-the-blanks. It's on that PowerPoint. We wanted them to translate that to basically an email, send it to you. And the board needs to decide. Y'all need to say, yes, these blanks, the way they fill them in are acceptable. This is a draft that we want to run with. At that point, when y'all agree on that, so that decision needs to be, you know, y'all need to look at that, decide again, are those where you want to end up? And y'all need to have a discussion and agree on that. Because we left that retreat not having, you did not have clear guidance on what the populations were, you know, sort of what the measures were. You wanted some more input from the staff. So they gave you that. So again, that clear document around the five-year, we're not talking about the one-year at all right now. Year is something that y'all need to receive, again, by email tonight, maybe. And if y'all are okay with that, you need to have a way that you're going to be okay with that as a group. But that, again, was the plan for tonight. So once you are okay with that, they can get to work on developing some interims for those goals and guardrails. They can get to work on developing what those, you know, year over year, here's our history measures would be for those numbers. And then at that point, y'all have, yes, we're okay with your interims. They're responsive to what we want. Based on what you told us, we're going to start in, you know, 2025 with this number. The board thinks that, you know, a proper five-year goal, based on what you told us, a proper five-year growth for this, and any other information the superintendent wants to give you, y'all want to hit this target in 2030. So those are the obligations that the board should expect to, A, get clear on the language of the goals and guardrails, because that is the data you're going to be requesting and measuring the superintendent on. Are you comfortable with that? Are you comfortable with the way that you're going to get the interim reports on that? So throughout the year, you're going to get interim reports on X, Y, or Z that are responsive to those goals. Are you okay with that? That all should be to you by October 23rd. But again, if you're not clear on what you're asking them to respond to, they don't have a basis of what to respond to. So.
Okay, thanks for that clarity.
Yeah, I just want to add this in because I haven't, it hasn't come up in our discussion tonight, but part of the process, part of, you know, we've talked about this before, would be that the board wants to, once you have drafted this, that you want to socialize it. That you want to say to the community, hey, we listened to you. We put together these goals, you know, this is what we've come up with. So that there, however you choose to do that, if you want to go back and do some listening sessions, it's not a fantastic time of year to do that. Other districts have done it other ways. But I think having a discussion around how you want to resocialize your, you know, these are our proposed goals, our draft goals, you know, to the community, does need to be considered. Y'all need to be thinking about that. You don't need to make a decision on that tonight. You need to be thinking about that.
Board member Sydney McCutcheon, you have, you got that information being the implementation chair? Any comments on it?
I'll follow up with Leslie to make sure that I have it all coordinated correctly.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Leslie, for that detail. All right, President Kotman, I'm sorry. Do you want to finish your timeline with the meetings?
Well, I'm going to allow Dr. Karesis to coordinate the meeting schedules. That's, but as it stands right now, we are going to have some information on the short-term goals for this year, 2425, sent out to us by Dr. Bullock. We will comment on them by Monday. You will, you have read them and returned your comments. I have you handling it from that point. And Dr. K will be setting up the next meetings that are, for the superintendent for our special meeting. But at the next committee meeting, someone will allow us to have a brief conversation about it. If there's any outstanding information that they'll understand, they could use that that time if they don't choose to respond. I encourage the board members to keep one, one email thread. So please, so we don't have two and three out there. Just piggyback off the next one and keep it going. But we'll pull it together. We'll talk to Dr. K in the morning, and he'll, he'll outline it for us, okay?
Can you send us an email thread with all that you just said?
That's what I just said. I'm going to ask Dr. K to pull it together.
Denegated, okay, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, that will be good. Okay, because it's a lot, the process. All right, so any other questions or comments from AJ and or Leslie Grant?
Again, I think, you know, coming up with a, an expectation about when, you know, data reports, information, anything that's coming to the board that the board needs to make a decision on, what is your timeframe for that? The board should make a decision about that. That's up to you. Having, having that expectation would be healthy. And then also having, you know, a, just, I guess, if you're going to have the consideration about next year's, nobody's seen it until today, you know, really, and we may have some feedback on that if y'all are interested in terms of the next year. Y'all put together a long list, I might break it down, you know, knock it down to three, have a couple of those be interims. I don't know that, you know, look a little more similar to what, what you had for last year, so. So that it's not so much on top that you're looking at for this year. But that's a conversation. If y'all want to have that conversation around the evaluation metrics for the superintendent for next year, you're welcome to ask.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. AJ?
Good comments, ma'am. But as always, we are happy to be of service if there's other things that we can do to support either the administration or the board in this process. Let us know. We stand ready to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to conclude with Dr. Williams' night. Comments?
She made, oh.
Comments? Here, I'm here. Lot covered tonight. So I guess, you know, you can expect tomorrow a one-pager with the goals for this year outlined in there along with interims. We can send that out to, you know, to the board as a whole. Ebony, I'm asking that we also send it to the cabinet so that they have it also. So that's the first step for us. We'll get that out by tomorrow. Let's say by noon tomorrow. You have it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, tomorrow.
We don't get off the bus until 12:00 noon. You better stay one o'clock.
Right, right. So maybe by the end of the day, by four o'clock, because we do have a bus tour tomorrow morning, so.
No problem.
I, I would like to chime in just for reality's sake. Tomorrow is the first day of school. I really don't feel like we should be putting pressure to have things put in place on the first day of school. The amount of phone calls and everything that all of us are going to get, let alone the superintendent and her team, I push for maybe early Friday morning, but let's give the grace of the first day of school to the superintendent and her staff.
I can. So whatever, if, if Dr. Bullock does not find the time to do it, but I already know her, she's already probably started cutting, pacing, and then put it together. See, look at her laughing. Already know who she is. I mean, there's nothing that, that's not in this document that we're not asking her for. And so, you know, it's all good. But I want to thank everyone. This, this is an exercise in love, because if you didn't love it, you wouldn't be trying to make a difference for it. And so I want to thank everyone for the work that they do. Chair, chairperson, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, you are over the, your purview is the evaluation of the superintendent and her annual review. And so we need to make sure that we get that wrapped up as soon as possible. And so that's the reason for trying to push this out, so that people can have ample time to read things. Okay, all right. So let's see how we can work that out over the next couple of days, okay?
Okay.
See everybody 8:00 AM tomorrow.
So with that, have a great night. Thank you again, Coach Wesley and AJ. Board member, superintendent, Dr. Sumaski, and Dr. Bullock, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, bye-bye.
Everybody, see ya.
Okay, bye-bye.